Good evening, Council. And Councilmember Beckman has just arrived, so other than his, he noted a few folks, he might be late, but he's here. And Councilmember Brinkman is otherwise engaged this evening, so we're-
She got engaged? What?
(laughing) Thank you. We have three agenda items tonight, hearing about the Aging Well Resource Center, the city's dashboard program, and then want to have at least a brief discussion with regarding the SCFD funding and the extension and some of the discussion that's going around that. So without further ado, we'll start with the Aging Well Resource Center and the update that Director Will Mesher of the center is gonna provide us.
That's me. Good evening.
Good evening.
I officially have to have glasses now that I work at the Aging Well Resource Center. So it's the first time I've ever done this in a council meeting.
Real funny. Real funny.
All right. So I'm here to talk about the one and only famous Aging Well Resource Center, Bemis Public Library. And I have about 15 minutes with you. So I'm going to be chop-chop-ish and give you good information and bring you up to speed with what's new. I was here in June, and at that time, I described our procedures and processes and how we did things and our resources and all that. And I thought, well, you can't really see the board, so you'll just have to look your hand out, but that tonight, I would just really very quickly run back over the resources so you'd have an idea of what those are. And then I'd get started on talking about what's new. The resources that we are handing out now that are being requested are very similar to what they were back in June. About 35% of the folks are asking for in-home services, which are medical and non-medical, things to stay in their home, as well as senior living options. And so that's folks who are looking to move into assisted living or independent living or something like that, and they need advice on that. About 20% of the folks are asking about Arapahoe County services, food, utility help, Medicaid, which you go through them to get to that, those kinds of questions. And then about 15% are transportation, and those are for both of our buses as well as Arapahoe County frequently, the new, the senior resource centers having taken over First Rite, those folks. About 10% for housing assistance, and that's typically the South Metro Housing Authority and questions with them, as well as folks coming in whose rent has been raised, have been raised. A lot of people have had that happen to them, about $150 in one month, and they're looking for a new place to go. And then the rest of the requests are for other questions, mental health, recreation, education, and things like that. So that's sort of a quick look at the resources, and I'll jump right into what's new since June. I have some exciting things going on. Well, and the first thing isn't really as exciting as it was sort of a shock, but my employee left, and I didn't see it coming, but as I always tell my kids, there's always a reason for everything, and it has ended up being a blessing in disguise. It's been, it was really actually nice to have the opportunity to go in there and work in the office every day. I learned a ton. I learned what people were coming in for and what resources were a waste of time to have there, and what was the most efficient way to get them in and get them out with the things that they need. So I just set about revamping everything and making everything just as efficient as I could. The first thing I did was I got after the resources, and I threw out about a third of what I had, of brochures and flyers and things like that, just a lot of junk that a lot of people had dropped off that we didn't need. Also, something that I make a point to do is to give people, live people to talk to when they come in and they need, they wanna go talk to somebody about something. I try to avoid any kind of a automatic phone number, government number, anything like that, and opt for a live person, except for Medicare, because they don't have live people. We just go with automatic on that. I also went through the database, and I stopped using it because I thought it was a waste of time, and querying things out of there didn't work. I'm working on getting a new one of those. And then I also recruited volunteers, which has been really nice. I have five volunteers that are helping me now. They fill in so I can take care of things, and then they also get to work with some of the older adults coming in, and they really enjoy that. And so do the older adults, and it's the whole reason they came in there in the first So there's that. The next thing, and this is under, under next steps, in helping the people coming in, realizing that so much of the time, they want, they just want someone to talk to and someone who cares, and someone to give them help and a resource to take, but it's the bonding that happens while they're there that is just so valuable. And I realize that a lot of the people that come in need a whole lot more of that. And so I've been thinking that, sort of working around the idea that it would be helpful to be encouraging all of the folks that come in the door to be thinking about who they could plug into in their community. And so a question that I've been asking folks recently is, do you know your neighbors? Do you know the people around you and the places that you go? Do you belong to a church? And do you have folks at the church that you could talk to and possibly get help from? And a lot of people do, but they have not initiated anything or spent too much time talking to these people, and they should, because there's a lot of people that care about them and would be willing to help them and take care of them. And that's a free resource. That's something, that's a resource in it of itself that we don't have to pay anymore for. People are right there, and we can help each other. Also, I like asking them if they volunteer, or if they would like to volunteer. There are so many things to do. And this is the healthiest and the wealthiest generation in the history of our country. Older adults have so much to give back. We really need to encourage that and give them what we can to help them feel like they're part of our community. So I encourage that in them, too. And some of those folks say, well, do you just have a list of things to do? And I say, no, I don't. What do you like to do? What are you passionate about? You know, kids or dogs or? And then once they get to talking, kind of come up with a lot of ideas. I've been in the community for a while, so there's a lot of things that they can do. But it, that kind of lights them up, and they get excited, and I think that that's a good way to go about expanding our resources, if you will. The other thing that I think that has occurred to me is that the resource providers, all of us, have a responsibility as well to do the best we can to save taxpayer money and come together and share the information that we have, so that we're not all doing the same thing, that we're not duplicating, and we're working together. And when I first started this project a couple of years ago, I did form a couple groups of folks that were a number of partners in the community. I had about 16 people in my group that was called the Littleton Coalition on Aging Well, ElCO, really nice group of people, very good-hearted and in the right place for helping folks. I worked with them as long as I could, and I also formed another very small group, an informal group of my colleagues, mostly in the surrounding counties, to try to learn from them, because some of them are doing amazing things. And they're still together, I say, we're still together, and we meet quarterly and kind of chat about what's new. But I think what I'd like to do is go back and look at those groups again and look at the idea of how we can all share and connect, because we should be connecting, too. We should be doing a better job of that, and not only connecting to the older adults, but connecting amongst ourselves. So part of making some of these new ideas happen, I'm really excited to say that I'm working, well, I'm hiring a consultant who I'm just thrilled to be working with. He's a lot of fun, and he is a native of Littleton. He's a senior, and he is an absolute guru, expert in making connections and connecting resources. I've never seen anybody like it, and so I'm gonna be working with him, trying to figure out ways that we can do more with what we have and get more done and get people more connected. So that's coming up soon, and he's knowledgeable at the state and the county and the local level, so that should be, should be a neat experience. And the last thing that I wanted to end with is that the new ideas that I have for not going out and implementing new resources or spending more money and bringing more of a sense of community to us, I think with being more connected resonate well for two reasons. One, the Denver Business Journal did just call us the second-best small city in the country out of 1,268 cities. And so that is a good reason for us to continue moving forward, building connections, as well as our very own 2014 city plan where we, and I quote, "dot-dot," want to improve small-town family. So I think we accomplished that, too. And we also save money, and I think that that's important, too. So going forward, I hope to bring together some new ideas, some exciting stuff, and saddle some human potential, get things done. So that's what's new.
Council, questions? Okay.
Do you have people coming in who want a roommate or wanna live with somebody else, downsized? Recently asking. Several people when I was going door-to-door were saying, geez, I really wanna move into something smaller, but I don't really have somebody maybe to help take care of my yard or I'm gonna need somebody to help with that. So, and we have, what does it may go, up to three people, unrelated people, and live in the same place. So somebody who has a pretty big house, if they had two roommates to share with and do some of the work, et cetera, could potentially stay in their own house, have their own yard, garden they love, and somebody who'd love to share those kinds of amenities could do that. So I didn't know if you might be setting up a database or just trying to connect people like that.
Well, we talked about it when we first opened, because we had a lot of people coming in and asking us about housing and doing that, and we had so many things going on, we sort of just took that idea and put on the back burner with so many of the others. But I do know that one of the things that we use a lot is called ColoradoHousingSearch.com, and you go in there and put in the amount of rent that you can afford, and if you have dogs, and deposit amount and all that kind of thing. There are some listings in there of roommates who are looking for other people, and everybody I show that to says, mm-mm, keep going, keep going. And I think people just are very wary of getting together with strangers and sharing with them.
Yeah, but what I'm thinking of maybe is a monthly opportunity for people to come and meet, size each other up, and there's no, there's no commitment there. It's just like, hey, if you connect, you do, or you don't, or whatever.
Right.
So it would be, it wouldn't be the same thing as this anonymous-
No, I get it.
It's the lunchdate.com, I think, that Councilmember Cole's trying to set up.
Yeah, there's a lot of, people want to have a board for all kinds of things that come in and share in the community, so I think it's a really good idea. I just have not had time to devote to that. I just wanted to put it on your record.
Bruce?
Kay, your resource location, there's open 20 hours a week now?
It is.
Is that enough?
Actually, it's open 16 now. I think it is, although I think it won't be in the near future. I have quite a bit of interest, and it really depends on the time of year. So for example, in January, there will be a whole bunch of adult children contacting us because they're worried about their parents, they saw them over the holidays. So it does do that. And the reason why I closed on Fridays was that when my employee left, I was running it four days in a row, and I had to have a day to do other stuff. So for now, I would say that it's working pretty well, but I don't, maybe in six months, that will need to change.
And based on what you've learned since that other employee left, would you be comfortable leaving a volunteer there to answer those questions? I have the feeling you have so much higher level of knowledge than the average person walking in the door that, and I'm very impressed with what you're saying, you know, it's just a tremendous effort that you've made. If you put a volunteer there, they may not be that familiar, and it's the only phone call that's made, and so the other person is not getting what they would've gotten from you.
Yeah. I do. I do put other people in there. I think it's important for, for one thing, I don't know everything, and there are other people. For example, on Wednesdays, I have a temp who will come in and help me out. And it's hard to walk out the door, because I know she doesn't have the background and all of that, but she's very compassionate, and she's caring, and she's a senior, and she knows an awful lot. And so the way that we've worked it out is I show her the bank of all the resources I've made, and she just emails me when she can't answer a question. And I have volunteers that do that, too. They'll come in for a couple hours at a time, and they'll run it. And it's interesting, because it just depends on who you get as to what answer you're gonna get. Not that I know anymore, they may have just some practical advice that I wouldn't know. So I hope, my goal is that everybody who comes in looks over to the database and polls, and I've got an alphabetical order, and originally, I tried to do it all electronically, but there were so many handouts and things, that you could actually just go in and look it up, if you know what to look up, like for health insurance, not go to H, but go to M for Medicare, you know, that kind of thing. So, so far, it seems to be working pretty well, but I'm constantly adding to it. So, I don't know, there's so many things to know.
Thank you.
And the most important thing is just taking care of people when they come in, I think.
Great presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kay, I remember in June, one of the things that you mentioned, and maybe because January was closer in memory, was that adult children were a fair portion.
Yep.
Maybe expanding some of that. As you look back on the last year, could you give a rough idea how many have been adult children? And then of the seniors that come in, maybe what age bracket they tend to be in?
Age bracket is, I would say, around 70. 65 to 75 is the most common age. For caregivers, seniors taking care of their partners or their loved ones as opposed to adult children, it's about half and half. I'm always surprised at how many adult children, like when we had the council event down at, off Wadsworth, your neighborhood, Michael?
Trailmark.
Trailmark. I had like five people come and ask me about moving their mom to Littleton and how to do it. It was almost the only kind of question I got. So it depends on where I go, but we're getting that question more and more. So it is, I see it as a niche. I see it as an area where we can really do a lot to help a lot of people. And I was right at that point to just take off with it, and then everything changed with my employee leaving, but my heart is still there. So I think there's, there's some neat stuff to be done to help people.
And then, just to kind of catch the resources, I imagine you're working with Linda Healy at the county, and I don't know if it's Jayla and Shannon and the folks at Network of Care and Dr. Cog-
Absolutely.
-that are there, and then you're tapped into the Jefferson County folks, which are-
They're my idols.
Yes. Well, I think they're idols for a lot of folks around, because they have, I think, four full-time folks at the county working on it, so they're, they're resourced, so.
I'm gonna go back and look at their stuff again, because I got good stuff going on.
And I know there's an, there's an interest in building on what we do have, so, yeah.
Yep. Those are all my partners. Any more questions?
Jerry?
You said you're gonna look at hiring a consultant. Are you talking about a consultant at a cost or at no charge?
At a cost.
And then, as far as employee, is the consultant just gonna tell us that you need to hire somebody? I mean, what is the purpose of the consultant?
The purpose of the consultant is to do more research and investigation around the best way to be doing connection of people to resources.
And you currently have a temp as well?
I have one person coming in one day a week.
So right now, you do have a staffing issue. Do you need to hire somebody?
Yes, I need to hire somebody who knows the field, I'd say, the area, and for more of the time, because there's, there's so many more things that I need to be doing that will make the progress of everything move forward, that I'd like to, I'd like to be in there about half of the time and have a staff person in there about half the time, and increase the hours worked Fridays as well.
And a consultant is gonna be, what, just for one meeting, two meetings, months?
I hope for a few months. That's my plan. I am in the process of putting the contract together with my boss.
Okay. Thank you.
And then with, I was just wondering, has anyone ever came across the idea? Because I know they have the senior lunch over at Buck Center on Wednesdays, or Thursdays, excuse me. And not all of those folks are in Littleton, but has anyone ever thought about remotely being available at that point in time, too?
Say that again?
They have a senior-
Senior lunch.
They have a senior lunch and possibly being available for folks that are already there.
Oh, to have, have the people be available to answer questions and things like that? I don't know, but I'm doing that. I'm going over there and speaking to them, and I'm gonna be setting up my, a table there once a month and nab those people.
Good.
Okay. Thank you, Kay.
Thank you.
And now we have Deputy City Manager and Samma, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council Mike Broughton, Deputy City Manager. So actually, the presentation is going to be given by Samma Fox, our intern in the City Manager's office. So if you may remember, Garrett Grabiel, our former intern, he started the update to this, to the dashboard, and now Samma has finished it. If you haven't met Samma, she is a graduate student at UC Denver and receiving a double master's degree in public administration and economics. So she's pretty smart. Anyway, I'll let, I'll let Samma go ahead and make the presentation, and if you have any questions, feel free to catch her at the end.
Thank you, Mike. We going pretty quick here, so please let me know if you have any questions. Hey, we're gonna start with just looking at demographics. We've got the population by age on top, current and forecasted. The thing to note here is that our largest growing group is 55- to 84-year-olds. This has grown 4% in the last five years and is projected to grow another 3%. Also take a notice that our median age is increasing, and we're slightly above the other communities here. Just a quick note on comparable communities. We've kept it the same as 2013, for any of you guys who saw this then. We're looking for close-in communities with similar economies and demographic characteristics and the ability to grow as well. So again, we've got just another age comparison. You can see Littleton is bolted out here in the blue with 25- to 34-year-olds. Littleton is below the average of 14%. There are 55- to 64-year-olds group in the red. Littleton is above the average here. Moving on to income and employment. So we've got a pie chart that breaks down households' income. About 50% of our population is over $50,000. Our median income is just below the Denver metro median income. Looking at labor force resiliency, we've got a small amount of people who are living in Littleton and employed in Littleton. Got about 87% of our Littleton resident workforce going out of Littleton for employment, and 92% of our workforce is coming in. Quick note on the share of jobs by industries. Formerly, in 2011, the top here was healthcare. Retail was tied for fourth, and now that's increased to first. Primary jobs per capita, this is the job that gets you primarily your income, most income. We're at 1.5 for both 2011 in the red and 2013 in the blue. The average for both of those periods was 2.8. Littleton workforce educational attainment, 32% of our workforce has a bachelor's degree or greater. And if you look here just at unemployment, you can see Littleton is consistently one of the lower unemployment cities. So tax and budget, we've got a graph here that shows that our sales tax is increasing, even when adjusted for inflation, we've continued increasing. Comparing that to some of the cities here, we can see that Littleton is steadily increasing, though not all of the cities have experienced the same increase. Looking at our tax collected per capita, Littleton's the third-highest and is well above the average of $4.89 per capita. So grant funding, we have increased our grant funding significantly in the last year, up 108% from the 2011 high you see here. We are still on the lower side of the per capita grant funding. If you include Wheat Ridge, we're below average. If you take them out, we're above average. Streets, you've noticed two groups in this graph. The larger groups are populations over 100,000. The smaller are populations under 50,000. So of the smaller city groups, we have the most lane miles and the most center lane miles. However, our budget is lower than some of those other cities with lower center lane miles. We're below the average. Fire and rescue, we've got an incident response summary here through the years. You can see it's pretty standard, the breakdown. We've got about 62% is EMS responses. That other big group, the purple, is categorized as other. These might be invalid assists, helping a non-injury vehicle accident, or assisting police or other government departments. Our uniform personnel per capita, or per 1,000 population, is on the low side for both 2012 in the blue and 2014. We also have the lowest amount of fires per 1,000 population. And again, here, our operations and maintenance budget is the lowest. One thing to remember with budgets, not everyone calculates in the same way. Some are included with different things. Taking a look at police, so total offenses per 1,000 population, Littleton's at 28.95, which is below the average. We're also below the average with the Littleton arrests, if you can see in the top corner up there, the darker sign, for adult and juvenile, both below average. And then the number of officers per 1,000 residents, Littleton is just about average Museum and library attendance, you can see that museum attendance has steadily increased despite the slight decline in 2014. Our circulation per capita is slightly below average, and our library staff per 1,000 served is just about average here. Total expenditures per capita for the library, our total expenditure in Littleton is slightly above the average for this group. However, you can see our programming is quite high compared to the comparable cities. We have much more attendance and programs. Housing characteristics here, so on this side, we've got owner occupied in the red and renter occupied in the blue. You can see that proportion hasn't changed a whole lot since 1990 to 2000 to 2013. And in fact, you look on the other side, we've actually decreased our renter occupied 1%. Overall, we've remained fairly steady. fairly steady in quite a long period. So renter versus owner occupied housing units. So Littleton has, like I said, about 63% of the owner occupied. We're pretty comparable to these select cities. Most of our owner occupied units have two or more cars. Most of our renting units have one. Your structure was built. You can see the majority of our units, about 53%, was built before 1980. If you're looking at units built before 2000, that's 87% of our housing units. The median value of owner occupied homes is 269, which is above the Denver metro. Rental vacancy rates, you've got second quarter 2005 in the blue, 2010 in the red, and 2015 in the green. And you can see Littleton has been on the low side primarily. We need to make a note about this green, this 9.4%. This is artificially inflated due to new units leasing up. They're coming on the market. So that is not what we would consider our actual vacancy rate here. Looking at real estate, total sales as a percentage of total housing units, Littleton is very low on their sales per housing units. Residential average sale price, again, you can see Littleton's on the high side here.
Sam, a question. On the top graph, that's available houses, houses for sale in Littleton. Is that correct?
This is sales that have occurred in Littleton compared to available housing, well, all housing units.
You're talking about just the sales or available?
Just the sales. Rental vacancy rates, sorry, wrong button there. Okay. Here we go. We ended up here at the residential average sale price. Looking at housing sales, getting the housing sales again compared to the comparable cities, you can see that Littleton is on the low side. This is again, 2010, 2011, 2013. You can see the spike for most cities and coming back down. So in 2014, 300 sales. So constructions, total permit valuations in 2014, Littleton is above average with the total permits as well as above average in the residential permits. You look down to, on the lower graph in the blue, you've got per housing unit. We are the second highest, and we're above average here as well, as well as per capita. We're above average on our permit valuation. The five-year value of all residential and commercial building activity, Littleton is the third highest here and is slightly above the average. I'm sorry, slightly below the average. In the five-year per capita, Littleton is right about average. Looking at new residential construction permits, on the top, you've got number of buildings. On the bottom, you've got number of units. And you can see they tell a little bit of a different story here. Littleton has been low on the number of buildings they've added, but they've been comparable with many of our other cities. You can see we've added a number of units in 2010 and 2014. You need to notice that we're below the average additions here. The 2014 average addition was 244. However, through the years, the 2010 average addition was 115, and that has been steadily increasing. So when you look at our aggregation of additions over five years, we're below the average. And lastly, we're going to check a look at schools. Our in-district resident enrollment has been declining steadily. Looking at the total change in enrollment, Littleton has decreased slightly since 2001, with statewide enrollment increasing, and our neighboring Jeffco remaining the same. That is what we have for you. Any questions?
We've been expanding this data, and we're also putting it online, making it more interactive. And to the extent, over time, our goal is to tie it in and have it be live data. So to the extent, I mean, the Assessor doesn't update everything daily, but to the extent that we can tie in, and it's the most current data, when we, if we were talking about police reports and crime, that would tie in directly with the law enforcement database. And so that's one of the things that they're working on as well, so that this is accessible really anywhere in the world, and it's as live as possible.
Bruce?
On the chart that you had for streets, can you put that up easily without jumping all the way back through there? No, I guess you can jump back through there.
Yes.
Okay, okay. I want to point out on the bottom, the city of Golden is so much higher than everyone else. I attended that CML conference where the Golden talked about their streets. And what they did was they passed a bond issue about three years ago, I think. I don't remember the amount of money. But they basically looked at the cost of improving that infrastructure up to the point that it should be, and then they put a bond on it, and that was a bond issue. So were it not for that, I understood from that conference, they would have been probably more where we are. Just point that out because Golden is so similar to us. I don't know whether Wheat Ridge has done a bond or not to get up that high, but I would think it would probably be worth knowing.
Well, and just a footnote on that is last Tuesday, Sheridan passed a $31 million bond focused on their streets and dealing with their infrastructure. So when you think of the size of the city of Sheridan, that's a lot of money. But they actually had it specifically identified as to projects that it was going to be related to. And so Golden's done their, if you want to call it a catch-up on infrastructure, and Sheridan just passed a bond for theirs. Other questions from Council?
Can you go to the new housing?
Yes.
Please, thank you.
Want to know where the 300 are?
I'm just going to scroll through real quick.
To comparable to other cities.
Construction.
There you go.
New residential spending permits?
Okay, cool. Thanks. Sam, I forget where it was, but you had one on retail sales taxes. Has there been any tracking of how much of that comes from people who are not Littleton residents? In other words, in-city expenditures or citizen expenditures versus non-citizen in terms of how we attract from outside the community?
That's a good question, and I would have to ask Finance then. We can take that as a takeaway if you'd like, though.
We, yeah, we really don't because we don't get to track that data. So there is no way for us to know. Some individual retailers collect your zip code.
Right.
They don't necessarily share that with us, and there's not enough for it. We've done it just in the gross number, and I'm not going to remember. But if you take every man, woman, and child, 43,000 divided by our 50x million, you know, it's, I think it's like 18,000 a person that each person would, man, woman, and child, would have to spend in Littleton on taxable goods, not your mortgage payment, not your car payment, and not your health insurance. And it gives you a perspective of the fact that that doesn't happen. And therefore, it is, we are a receiver of destination for other people who are spending their goods. We are not supplying the revenue that maintains us.
Right.
Which is a good thing, right?
It's in-migration, so to say.
Yes, yeah.
Of shoppers, so.
And Colorado as a whole is an in-migration state that way as well from a tourist.
Thanks to robust tourism.
That's right.
But that's the destination tourism piece that I'd like to see us think about down the road because that's easy money, so to say.
Bruce? The, it's a lot of good data. I mean, I know there's a lot of work that goes into pulling this stuff together. I think whenever you present data of this nature, the natural question is what conclusions do you draw from any one or more slides? And I mean, I guess the question for you guys ends up being, collecting it's great, but maybe the value add is the tie-in to policy-related kind of stuff. I mean, is that something, there's an expectation of linkage on?
Not, that wasn't what tonight's presentation was. But absolutely, I'll tell you, the department heads in particular, like if you go to the fire.
Yeah, right.
Chief Armstrong is using this data on a, probably a daily basis. Tonight was just to show you the update because what we're really trying to do is move from, you know, paper and tablet.
Right.
To this, and we want to, you know, let you guys know what's going on. And you'll know and remember that Mike and our communications staff put together the paper version of this that we send out annually.
Right.
And primarily, that's general data. We're not trying to move in any particular direction because it's for the department heads more than anything.
Okay.
We do utilize it when we come forward to the City Council on a particular, if there's a policy question that we're either asking or council is asked, this data would be utilized and brought forward in that piece of it. But this evening, it's just, here's what we've been working on.
Yeah, okay. And I think that's right. I mean, I think when you, it's good work. And it's a great repository to have available for anyone who wants to look at it. But then taking it the next mile is a challenge.
Jocelyn's using some of this data as she's been reorganizing community development and looking at what we're lacking in our permanent or inspection world.
Okay.
And so how does she shift it around and work in the mark? And so most of this is primarily operational data more than anything else.
Okay.
Available if anybody's sitting at home wants to look at the jammies and flip through.
Sam, as someone who goes into other communities and does market work to see if assets should be located there, this is great stuff. It really, really brings a lot together. So kudos to you, all three of you guys.
Well, it's the, you know, when you go through this, you know, many of us around the table, but not everyone, has some reasonable knowledge of all the other communities. And so you can, you can kind of get to that point of having some of that conclusion if someone, Samma, talks, because some of that data has the same comparables and other data has a different database. Like when you were looking at fire, it was a different base of organizations that were being dealt with. But certainly on the fire and rescue, it's amazing to see how few fire calls there are. It's either other or medical. So, you know, when you're, you know, sitting there and looking at parsing that out, like Engelwood was making their decision of, you know, Denver Health for their emergency response and Denver Fire for their fire, those are two different contracts. And so when you're looking to separate some of that, whereas for us, fire and rescue all come together. But it does, I mean, when it gets in strategically, that's where you start seeing things like Care Car and Quick Car because of the predominance of EMS-related calls versus, you know, the fire calls. Other questions, comments from Council? Sam, are you having fun with data?
Yes. I'm an economics major, I must.
Anything to add, Mike?
No.
Okay. And travel safe, please, if we don't catch you later, so. Okay. Thank you, Council, on that. Last agenda item for this evening, you've been spared what I might have sent out as a lot of data around this. And I know that at least some of you have been privy to some of the communication from organizations regarding the SCFD extension that is anticipated to go on to the ballot for next fall. And as you might imagine, we've been asked to take a position of support in that. And to let you know, there's been a number of jurisdictions that have done that. As the email earlier today said, we have a spectrum of options that we can deal with on this, which is take a position, not a position, support one side, support not another side. And I've had the experience of hearing a number of presentations around this. And just to kind of tell you a little bit about what the process has been a little bit, it's been almost a four-year process where the SCFD board has had a task force that has taken a look at the extension and should they be making any changes or tweaks to the allocation formulas. And I know that most of you are aware that there's a tier one, and tier two, and a tier three. And the SCFD got started in the late 80s when the Denver metro region was experiencing some economic stress. Some of the, for lack of a better term, I'll call them the iconic attractions in the area from a cultural or scientific perspective, being like the zoo or the Museum of Nature and Science, as well as the Denver Art Museum, were struggling. And that was a little bit of the basis. And it's already gone through two renewals. And this is the renewal that's coming up. What was included in our distribution was the, a resolution that is supporting the board position that has come out. And I wanted to see where folks were, if they've had any thoughts around some of this, and if there's any concern in bringing this forward as a resolution for Council possibly next week. So.
Rich Meredith had made the request for a council to review this from Hudson Gardens.
Right. And Hudson Gardens is a tier-two recipient for SCFD funds. Bruce? I know there was a citizen who had reached out with, I believe, the position that maybe the formula needed to change from what it has been to where traditionally a lot of suburbs have put money into Denver, and maybe it was time to have that flow go the other direction. What's your take on that? I know you had communicated with her as well. So what's your assessment of that whole argument? I've seen multiple presentations and discussions on the issue for both sides, both from the board task force and a group is FACE, FACE, that is there. And the SCFD funding has always tilted since its beginnings towards the iconic elements that are all located in Denver. So it's known as the Big Five now. Originally, it was four, but it's five organizations. And the, there were a number of tier threes that felt, one, that the task force wasn't a transparent process, and number two, that indeed were donor organizations when you get to any of the suburbs of Denver, including Aurora, which has a number of tier twos as well. And so you understand some of the approach. Tier one and tier two are formulaic and determined in the legislation for the authorization and pretty much gets set by the board. And so that's there. And then there's a tier-three pool that is pushed out into the counties and gets allocated to individual organizations through a grant response effort. And they're called, for the most part, cultural councils. So Rappahoe County has one. My personal thought in all of this is it would always be nicer to have a larger pool, to have more money. However, on this, I think in talking with a number of them, their frustration is with the lack of transparency on the cultural councils at the county level in how they make decisions on the grants to the individual organizations. So it's not driven as much by a formula for those organizations as it is as a grant response. And I know that there's a contingent of folks that think, some of them maybe shouldn't even be getting an allocation because some of them are receiving as. even be getting an allocation, because some of them are receiving as little as $750 a year in what they're seeing. And I'm not sure that the SCFD funding mechanism is actually the best place for that, those types of organizations to be dealt with. And there is a tweaking, there is a change that's even in the Board Task Force presentation that will actually take slightly more of the SCFD funding and move it into the Tier Threes. And so there already is some change, and the group that was, that's looking for it that some of us have received communications from would just love to see that pool bigger because they'd love to see more money there.
Who's on the SCFD board? Is that elected?
It's appointed. Don Jenkins, I believe, is the board president.
I mean, do we?
Yeah.
So Rich asked that Council support the resolution. South Suburban's taking it under advisement tomorrow. We expect that they will support it, or it's just to go in the packet for when the board reviews it. Because primarily, I think we've got Hudson Gardens.
Rich supporting.
South Suburban gets some through, I think.
And the reason for asking, yeah, and the reason for asking for support is, all of the organizations would love to see an extension of the SCFD funding.
Yeah.
And the 1/10th percent sales tax that goes towards it. The challenge is, is if there's not an overwhelming level of support, that the legislature might get involved, and.
What a good idea.
Not a good idea. And so what they're trying to do is get in a position of forestalling some of that. And so the regional counties have all supported it, Rappahoe County specifically has also supported it, the Board Task Force, and we're being asked, and our lone Tier Two organization, which is Hudson Gardens, has made a request that we support the Board Task Force position.
Okay.
And so if there's, at least if anyone, go ahead, Peggy.
I'm having difficulty with the last paragraph here of redistributing, taking 12 years to redistribute something. But that is a heck of a long time to redistribute if there's a good reason to do some redistributing.
It's basically taking a gradual approach over the life of this authorization bill that says every year.
No, I mean, that's what I'm saying. It's gradual. It is mighty darn gradual. And somehow or other, I don't know, since I don't know all the numbers, what might be more attractive to me, but 12 years is just a long time.
Yeah, and there's a website link that I know Michael has that we can distribute this week so that folks can take a look at it. But basically, the task force was made up of Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three, as well as county council representatives.
I think.
And this is what they, their compromise.
You're not going to change what their compromise was.
I can decide whether to support.
No, you can. I'm just saying that they've decided on the 12-year piece. You can change what the resolution says, but, you know, staff's recommendation ultimately is that you support this because it's coming out of the request of our Tier Two, which is Hudson Gardens and our partner with it. We're not negotiating the details of it, but yeah, you need to decide. But I think Phil's comment that this has been months and months of negotiations between.
Years.
Years. And this is a resolution to continue the funding, attempt to continue the funding, and I think to be very direct, to bypass the legislature getting involved, that they want to move this forward, so.
The Tier Threes are happy, not happy with this?
Well, I don't know that anyone, we can, there's, one of the issues is.
Satisfied?
Tier Threes, this is what came out of the working group. So you would say that in general, all the parties are probably somewhat happy and not happy. One of the issues with Tier Threes is they come and go so quickly because they're small. As the mayor mentioned, some of these are, you know, $700 a year that they're getting a grant for. But this was the compromise of years, so Council can choose to support the resolution or not.
Comment? I would rather give it a couple, I'd like to have maybe a more of a study session where we can talk about the mechanics of it, how does it work now, and how do we expect this to work? I got that email, but I didn't get a chance to read it until 5:15 this evening.
That's why the mayor wanted to bring it up.
Right, but I would rather have more time to talk about it another time after I've read that information that's been sent, look at this, and then have, I don't know, someone come and maybe present this to us a little bit about.
I'm sure Rich would be.
I'd rather do that than just all of a sudden say, yeah, we agree with the resolution. I'm not opposed to it necessarily or at all, but I do just need to know more about it.
Okay. I mean, what we can do is include some support material, and I know Rich is more than happy to come next Tuesday and answer questions.
And I may not be ready by Tuesday. I'd be more likely probably to say no at that time than if we didn't have time to contemplate it.
And appreciate that. The, I think what Michael was trying to say is, they've already worked through this. We're not going to be in a position of either changing it, it's either going to be a position of, as I outlined, it's either support, not support, decide to take no position, it's not that we jump in and look to negotiate any of this. And we are not going to be a leverage point in this. What they're looking for is trying to have an overwhelming level to keep the legislature out, which most folks would kind of agree that that's not a good course, so.
I would still like more, if it's not a rush and we're not the big talk.
No, it is.
I would rather, go ahead.
There is a timeframe, is what I wanted to say.
Well, you can say that. I still just need more information, just throw this at me and say, do you agree to bring this forward? I mean, you know, I just.
And what we can do is, there's material that's out there, and we can get it out even early this week so that you can take a look at it, and Rich would be in a position of being able to do that, so.
Rich is.
Rich Meredith, who's the director of Hudson Gardens.
So would this, if we acted on this before the end of the year, would that be adequate?
No, they want to do it before it's even a presented bill, which is being potentially worked on now, so that's why they're trying to.
To be trying to.
They're trying to stop that.
Okay.
Yeah, if Council's not interested, it's fine. It's, they're, as the mayor said, they're just trying to show support for it. So they're going out, we expect South Suburban to approve it tomorrow, so we can update you guys.
Thank you.
If and when they do.
I tend to agree with Jerry on this, not because we have any leverage, I realize that, but if I'm going to support something one way or another, I want to know what I'm supporting. So is there any reason we didn't get this till, you know, a week before they want to know? Is that, I mean, is this new?
It was reemphasized that the timeframe was sooner than later.
Okay. So if we can get information in that, I'd be willing to do the homework to get to a conclusion.
There's a fair amount of information that's there. There's a good summary on one of the webpages of how the task force.
We'll send you, there's a piece of link.
Task.
You just search through it.
Okay. That's great.
And we'll have Rich available on Tuesday.
Great.
Okay. And so you may still be in a position, but.
I just don't like putting us in a position where, here it is, Council, let's hurry up and get this done. I mean, we've been in that way for the last couple of years, and I would just like to see us slow down a little bit and really start considering stuff a little more thoughtfully.
Okay, that's, I mean, we'll get information out to you, so. Very good. Anything else?
For tonight, I mean, another issue? Yeah, so we have, I think, tentatively scheduled at a breakfast meeting, our discussion of our goals for next year.
And protocols, yeah.
Yeah, I really would like us to do that at a study session where we have video and other human beings might be more likely to be able to attend, watch, whatever. I don't know if other people support that or not, but I would like that.
I agree with that. I agree with what Peggy's saying. I just think it's really important when we establish these procedures, because I imagine we'll be talking about things that affect how people perceive us. I'd rather do it in the open rather than not have it known how we arrived at it and if there was a debate or consideration. I just think that's just part of being responsive.
And then, just to let folks know, tomorrow is the Veterans Remembrance at the World War II Memorial at 11:00 a.m. tomorrow. For folks' information, the Transit Alliance training is tomorrow evening. And Thursday is the Grapes to Grads, which is the ACC fundraiser over at Affinity Auto over in Highlands Ranch. There's things going on this week. With that, have a great evening, folks, and hopefully we won't catch much snow.